Good afternoon. This is the regular meeting of Joliet Junior College in District 525. Kelly, can we call the order, please?
Sir. Kristi Broderick.
Present.
Trustee Budzinski.
Here.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Honoree.
Trustee Mahalik.
Present.
Trustee Morales.
Here.
Trustee Stemporski.
Here.
Trustee O'Connell.
Here. We, uh, Trustee Jake is acting as a appointing secretary pro tem. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. It's gonna be a hot one tonight. Spring is over. So, welcome. Can we have the pledge of allegiance? I'll do it. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right. Public comments. Any public comments?
There are no public comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. 1.1, Business Reports. 1.1.1, President Ambassador Group.
I'd like to invite Kelly Roder Tonnelli to the podium. If you recall, there has been inquiries from the board regarding our community outreach, most recently the Joliet Park District, so I thought it'd be most appropriate to bring Kelly to the podium to provide an update to the board. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. I'll wait until my presentation comes up. How is everybody? It's been a while since I've been up here at the dais. Nice to see you and good evening. I'm, you're gonna get me two times today. I'm gonna present, I'm gonna share some information with you and answer any questions you have about our ambassadors program, our president's ambassadors program. I have some questions on some marketing publications that I think came up the last workshop, so I'll address that as well. So, thank you. I'll go ahead and kick off with the president's ambassadors update. Thank you. Yeah, I don't know what's going on here. Okay, so just a real quick update. This is something that was really a vision of Dr. Mitchell's when she became president. It was really important for her to have not only strategic community engagement for the president, but to really align the outreach of what was going on at the college globally. And so shortly after that, she tasked me with that and we started that vision and implementing that vision in 2018. And so where we are to date is that we have 38 employees who are formally recognized as JJC ambassadors. We serve over 60 organizations. And over that time, from 2018 to now, we've invested over 250 hours into our district, which I think is really amazing considering two of those years have been pandemic. So just again, moving forward, a couple of the new connections that we've established since we launched the president's ambassadors group, you'll see them here on your screen. Again, very diverse. This is just a highlight list of some of them, but we've certainly created other wonderful, wonderful partnerships. So as you can see here, Spanish Community Center, Plainfield, Sherwood, Chamber of Commerce, American Red Cross, Romiaville Chamber of Commerce, Romiaville Rotary, and Kiwanis of Joliet. And I want to make a note that on the first four bullet points there, those are all formal board seats held by JJC employees. And I know many of you are in the room. I see Chief Campbell, who's a JJC ambassador for the American Red Cross. Dr. Braun is Romiaville Rotary, correct? Yep. So it really takes a village and I appreciate everything that you have been doing to be JJC ambassadors as well. So, you want me to try it again?
Um.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, so in order to be a good ambassador, it's our job to go out into the community and tell the college's story, right? We want to make personal connections with people in our community. And actually, data that we have in terms of applications that are filled out supports this. The number one reason people choose to fill out an application at JJC is because they've personally heard about the college and a good experience through a family member or a friend or another reference. And so we know making those face-to-face connection points are critical. So what do we do to equip our ambassadors to be good ambassadors? Well, as you'll see at the bottom, we have just again, high level. We do provide other things as needed depending on the event, but we provide a Fast Facts kind of fold, like fold-out sheet. It's small, it fits in your wallet. We also provide spirit wear when needed and also Wiley if he's available. He's been on our, he's been to some 5Ks, he's been to some parades. We also provide our community impact piece and connections piece to our ambassadors if they're going out into the community. And those are really, we use those across the board. We hand those out to legislators, we hand them out to community organizations, and those again, in paper form, are telling the story of the college. And at each kind of point in the year, some of the high-level global successes that we have. We also provide branded virtual backgrounds and PowerPoints, so if one of our ambassadors is asked to give some kind of presentation, show up to a meeting, you know, they've got those tools available to them and they're all available within the college's portal. Again, just a few from 2018 on, it was hard to pick because we've done a lot of really great things together, but these are just some of the events that we've participated in, starting in 2018 through now. One thing I did want to note, Northern Illinois Food Bank actually came to us as a community partner and said, "How can we work together to help support food insecurity and access to food in our district?" And since we started that a year and a half ago, at each of those events, we do those twice a month, we have upwards of 900 individuals come onto this campus. Not only do we know that the need is real, but we're bringing those folks here and helping them. So I don't, did I, I don't know if I heard somebody ask, did anybody ask a question? Trustee Garcia again?
I'm just gonna mute the speaker.
Okay. All right. I will keep moving. So last slide here on this, obviously, you know, the pandemic, we had to stop doing regular outreach. A lot of events were canceled. Everything from lunches to parades to, you know, other type volunteer opportunities that we might typically be involved with. And so we were still able to stay connected. We did a couple of virtual things, but really now is when I'm starting to see the pickup in parades. Trustee Broderick, you're on the slate to attend the New Lennox Expo, which was supposed to be last weekend, but now it's moving to this weekend. Same thing with Children's Day. Trustee Morales, I know you're on hand to help us out with that. That was also supposed to be last Saturday, rescheduled to June 5th. So we're starting to see a lot of these opportunities pick up again. And so as I look at other upcoming opportunities, I definitely want to see that number of ambassadors grow. We started out in 2018 with 46. We're down to 38, and that's truly part and parcel to retirements and people moving on and taking other positions at the college. So, you know, I have to give it to the folks in this room and who are listening, it's a lot of work. You know, we're asking folks to do their regular work and show up on their own time. And sometimes it's difficult to find volunteers, sometimes it's not. But what I can tell you is each person that attends these are passionate and they care. And they know how to tell the college's story and really make those connection points. And it's something that I think we can all collectively be proud of. They truly represent the culture of who we are at this institution out in the community. So that's what I'd like to do. Next thing, you know, Dean Morris and I have been talking a lot since the Student Ambassador Group launched, how we can partner. So again, if, let's say we've got someone headed to Romiaville Rotary and there's some kind of opportunity to bring a student that maybe went to Romiaville High School that now goes to JJC with that ambassador, those are some opportunities there. There's also a new association in Joliet that launched last summer. It's Latino Economic Business Association. I've had a couple of meetings with the president of that organization, gave him a tour of the city center campus, and we're trying to figure out how we can become more involved and support one another. Bolingbrook Chamber of Commerce, to my knowledge, we've never had representation there, and they just formed an education committee. And so I would like to, if anyone's interested, find someone who would be willing to serve there and really help us expand our footprint in Bolingbrook. And then lastly, this has been ongoing, Identify Church and Spiritual Organizations to share this information. We had one or two ambassadors that were really interested in this in 2019, right before the pandemic hit. And once that happened, there were some things that kind of got in the way of us really kind of making that successful right away. So as I look to the future, those are the things that I think we can continue to do and grow the president's ambassadors group. It's really been certainly a learning opportunity, but one that I think, you know, Dr. Mitchell had great vision in. And it's really helped us organize and be very strategic in a lot of what we're doing out in the community. So I'm free to answer any questions you might have.
I'm gonna make a comment. I did the New Lennox Parade last Saturday. It was a welcome sight to see 78 floats. But I gotta tell you, everybody that was walking and all the people that were out there waiting for the candy to just be distributed, they were all excited to see JJC. And if you go back to that picture that shows the float, the float gave us big recognition. They loved us. Oh, JJC, you kept hearing the JJC stuff. So it's a good, I mean, I think it's just a good way of getting people involved again that were there, were here, and they loved it. I mean, it was very rewarding, and Roxanne was the ambassador that worked with me. Everybody knew her too, because she was from New Lennox. So it helped out to extend to the area that you're covering, which I thought was great. And yeah, it was a three-hour timeframe, but it was fun. It was absolutely fun and people were so excited to see us. The kids were definitely excited for the candy, but the parents were like, yay, JJC! So I think that's a positive plus for what we're doing.
It's fun. Yeah, we've done some parades together, I know.
Yeah, and there's another one that I don't see on there that's coming up in Homer that's at the end of June that we should be in since we cover Homer too.
Send it my way.
I will. I'll forward it to you.
Yeah. The other thing I did forget to mention is since this started, we do have an annual calendar of events, so that now that hopefully we're gonna get into more normal operations here and things are canceled, we know that in a particular season or month, we're ready for things as they come up, things that we know are signature or annual events.
More in question, was that the New Lennox Chamber Expo you're referring to?
That was the New Lennox Loyalty Tape Parade sponsored by the VFW, which was by Patrick Athens, who started this thing about 40-some years ago.
So that's different from what's on this?
Different from the expo. The expo will be in the Community Village Center, and there will be tables and tents set up for each one to walk around and see.
But the one that just happened is something different.
It's always entirely different.
Okay, and that's not printed up here, right? No.
No, it was supposed to be, what, the first or second of May, and because of the rain coming through, they moved it to this Saturday.
Yeah, it was the same day as the Spanish Community Center event that was canceled due to weather.
Okay. I know one thing I don't see on here that has happened also, that JJC has sponsored, and they've been doing an excellent job, is the Mexican Independence Day Parade in September, mid-September, and that's not listed on here.
You know what? When I use the word highlight, it truly is. I had, I had a hard time choosing what to focus on, but I actually have some really great pictures over the years, but we do, we do participate in that, yeah. It's by no means comprehensive.
Yeah, because I think, aren't you also at the Joliet one too? From what I remember, there was a table at the stadium too? And that's in July or August that you do it? I mean, I think there's a lot that's not on here. We need to get more of a, see what the calendar is per month and...
This is high, I love.
Representative, but it's, the list is quite extensive.
Yeah, it is. It's, it is.
At this point, most of my phone is, it's more pictures of ambassadors events than of my family, I think, at this point. But it's nice, because it's nice to look back and look through the years and see what we've been able to do.
On your last screen, the one after this, that second bullet, I believe, are you talking about LEDA?
Yes.
So it's the Latino Economic Development Association.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yes. Alex Paramo is who I've been...
Yes, Mr. Paramo, okay. And then I, the last bullet, on Identify Church Spiritual Organizations, what was the thought process behind the ambassadors that were gonna be working at this? Like what, where was that going? What was that for?
You know what? We were, we were having some initial conversations. I had two ambassadors that were interested, and it was about engaging with those already kind of developed groups within those organizations and, you know, coming into an environment, whether it was maybe some kind of prayer group or, you know, again, an appropriate event to share information with family and friends, and whether that's some kind of informal presentation, whether that's sharing some collateral, some leave-behind information, that was the, kind of the essence of the conversation.
And I had also heard too, on that note, like when you do the Halloween thing, the trunk things, that they were allowing us to come in if we wanted to for the trunk and treat, when they weren't doing in COVID, they weren't doing any wanting the kids go to door-to-door. They would allow us, all of the different people in the church activities to do a trunk and treat with all the different churches. Like I know that in New Lennox, because they were doing that. They were extending to the colleges too, or to the high schools too.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice to put that on paper, but I want to see that what we do has some really solid substance to it. I know, I've been on this board for almost eight years now, and I've been asking Dr. Farmer and the president to really have more of a presence in, you don't want to reinvent the wheel. You organize the organized, and that's the churches. They're already, they have programs going on. We don't need to restart new groups, you know, just work with them and really having more of a presence there. So I'm happy that it's, that the lettering, the ink made this paper, but is there really substance? And that's what I'd like to see. How is it being built? What's the vision? What's the, we have to be intentional and not just give something, a bunch of limb service and say, this is what, you know, let's, let's be real about what we're gonna do and have some, it's nice to have ambassadors. I think we need to have student ambassadors, but maybe somebody that's an employee of the college that really understands, you know, like, I don't know, somebody from admissions maybe, you know, to come out there or from the multicultural department to go out to the churches with the ambassadors and really have an intentional plan. But I'm glad to see it written down now, this time.
Yeah, definitely. And I will tell you, without being able to reference the sheet of ambassadors, I know we have significant representation from student development. I'd have to actually look at the list and see which offices, but like I said at the top, people really like going out and talking about JJC. They're proud of it. And I think, and this is why I say upcoming opportunity. Dr. Mitchell's vision was the start. We've really been able to build that out. And what this allows us to do is, is do analysis and have data that we never even had before. And have conversations like this. So I appreciate that feedback.
And then one last thing. So on the Children's Day, the, that was supposed to take place in April, and I know you mentioned that I was participating, but I feel like I kind of jumped in at the last minute because we were trying to like scramble and put something together, because JJC was simply just hosting the event. But what I learned through the process is that there was no, like, a real commitment, like we didn't have anybody, a name of a person that we could say, oh, this person at the main campus is going to be helping coordinate it with the Spanish Community Center. That was, there was no name. And that's where kind of, I kind of jumped in to say, okay, you know, I'll fill in and I'll represent the college with the families that bring their children out. But then it did get canceled because of the high winds and we didn't want to create a dangerous environment. But I would like to see that maybe more formalized next time. I know the Spanish Center reached out to, I think Suzie Stockwell to lease space or, you know, fill out whatever forms, cross the Ts, dot the Is, you know, just to say they could have it here so that JJC could host it. But there was nobody from JJC that was actually like a point person we could go to, you know, to say, this is a person there that's gonna work with you all. At least a name was never shared with me.
Yeah. No, and I agree. The year before, we hosted it and everything went swimmingly. In fact, I was there representing the college, so it was kind of a fluky situation. And I do appreciate the fact that you were there and ready to jump in and be a good ambassador. But since then, we did add that to our annual list.
Thank you.
So it's part of our calendar.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Kelly.
Yep.
Thank you, Kelly. All right. 1.1.2, Marketing Publication Strategies.
Here's again, Kelly Roder Tonnelli will present, and then I'll ask Kristi Mulvey to join her as well for this presentation. So Kelly, kick it off.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Mitchell. So I know that there were a couple of questions. Like I said, I believe it was at the last workshop that I can hear, address, and offer any additional insight or information that you're looking for. So before I go into, I think it was three pieces that you had questions on, I just want to give you a quick reminder about the overall strategy that we employ. And this is, this is pretty standard best practice. You can do it across corporations or higher education. And that's an integrated marketing strategy. What that means is that we're using digital print and personal touchpoints through lead generation to increase awareness of the college and to create call-to-action opportunities. So awareness pieces are kind of like a billboard that you might see when you're driving down I-80 or down Black Road, right? Or maybe an ad that pops up while you're on the internet before your YouTube video starts playing one of our commercials. Call-to-action piece, and I've got samples of this moving forward, is maybe a Discover JJC poster, an intentional call to action to come to the college and potentially, you know, make that, that action and register. So the other thing I want you to remember, as I'm talking about integrated marketing and kind of starting at that real broad part of the funnel and moving in and talking more specifically about print pieces, is that on average, it takes between five to seven brand impressions before the person that you want to remember it and see it remembers it. So that's why we have all of these touchpoints in different channels, because we know that it takes people between five and seven opportunities, or what we call them, impressions, to remember So here's a couple of samples of call-to-action pieces. Again, you know, we've got a couple of examples in Spanish. I mentioned our Discover JJC campaign. Again, very intentional and specific, what we're asking someone to do and come to the college and register. Couple of other examples, campaign billboards. This is actually hot off the press on the right here. This is our registration guide that will be out for the fall. And a couple of social, social media ads as well. The other thing I want to talk about before we get into the discussion about Connections Magazine, Community Impact, and Fast Facts is that really, for our ad dollars and how we spend our ad dollars, we do invest more in awareness pieces. They are just as important, if not more, to our brand and our strategy, because we need those touchpoints to help tell the college's story. So all of these pieces help tell the college's story, whether it's just an awareness, hey, we're Joliet Junior College, we're here, or register for fall classes. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So here's a couple of awareness examples, and these are really gonna be the pieces that we take a little deeper dive in. I know there were some questions on what do we use them for, how much do they cost? And so I've prepared that along with just, you know, a couple of visual examples, so that if you've seen them before, you're connecting what I'm talking about. Okay. So we'll kick off with Community Impact. This is a piece that we print three times a year, and I won't read off all of the costs for print and postage and the number of people we sent it to, but you've got it there in front of you on your PowerPoint and on the screen. This is something that is a very global piece. It's a piece that's small, it's mobile, it's sent on behalf of the president and her office to discuss, three times a year, critical successes that the college has to share with the community. And a lot of that is, again, sharing students' success stories, talking about financial, fiscal responsibility to our taxpayers. And so when we talk about how many people we print, we send the print copy to, so the number that you see there, 720 people, that's who receives a print copy in the mail. We also do this in a digital flipping book style, which we email out and actually share all over our website and social media. So this is sent to community leaders, legislators. I think, well, business is an industry, but I think you've sent them to your donors too. Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so this is something where it's global enough, but up-to-date enough, where if we want to talk about what's happening in a semester, whether it's to a stakeholder, a potential donor, a business partner, we can hand that to them. And that's, that's pretty in line with what Dr. Mitchell may be talking about at her State of the College address and what may be explored in more depth in the Connections Magazine. Okay? So those come out three times a year. I'll move on now to the Fast Facts fold-out. This is something, this was an idea that Dr. Mitchell had, which has turned out very well, actually. We typically have provided just sort of a one-pager, Fast Facts, about the college, what our demographics are, how many households we serve, how affordable our tuition is, great infographics. And one day, it was probably two or three years ago, no, it was pre-pandemic, and she said, "This is, this is just a big piece of paper. It's hard for me to carry around. When I'm out and about, I need something that's small, and I want to be able to give it to people and stick it in my wallet." So that is exactly what we did. And so this is a fold-out piece that's developed in both English and Spanish, that if you, if you actually flip that, I'm only showing kind of the front and back of that piece, but it has that data. So it talks about enrollment, affordability, again, demographics and things of that nature.
Right, and it looked like a card, a playing card, that just opened up, which was great to share with everybody that wanted one.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for that collaboration. It was a good idea.
The board receives those every year, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I love that piece.
Yes. So, and then finally, I want to talk a little bit about Connections Magazine, and that's, I'd love for Kristi to come up and join me at the podium, because this is something, really at the end of the day, there's, there's three areas at the college that work together to speak directly to the public. That's corporate and community services and workforce development, that's my area, and there's advancement and foundation. And so we all work very closely together on key public pieces. Connections is one of them that Kristi and I and our teams work together on very closely and have for some time. This is a publication that is one of our oldest publications. We kicked it off in 2008.
Yes.
I think. And it's actually kind of a mix of older pieces that we used to spend a lot more money on to create this slick piece. So I'll have her speak to that. But it's something that, that again, we specifically send to donors and alumni, but it's also something we will hand out if Dr. Mitchell's gonna go on a visit to another institution, if she's meeting with donors, with business and industry partners. So again, it's one of those global pieces that helps us continue to tell the story of the college. And again, awareness piece, not necessarily call to action, but it's helping people understand why they need to invest in JJC. So...
One of the, one of the calls to action is that in each of the Connection magazines since 2008, we are, we put a giving envelope inside, so that if something that the reader reads that makes them feel they want to give to the college, they have the envelope, it's paid for postage, and they, then they can make the gift, because there's a letter from the president, there's a letter from me as far as the foundation. And then, you know, when I first came, we had an alumni newsletter, and that went out just for alum. We've had a planned giving newsletter, which costs probably like $7,000 every time we put out the planned giving one. We have, we've had several. We don't do a separate, which a lot of colleges do, an annual report for the college and the foundation. So we use that publication for our annual report every year. So every spring, both the college and the foundation's annual report in there. And like Kelly said, it's a collaboration. It's not just her office. Alumni, donors see it, our business partners, my office, Kelly's office, sit down together and go through what we're gonna put in the magazine. What are some of our recent successes? What, what do we want people to see about JJC? It's basically a publication that tells the story, asks people to give and engage. We always highlight an alum on the back cover that has been successful in the community. A lot of our Susan H. Wood people were from that. But we sit there, we collaborate about what, what, what do we want this to feel like? What is the theme? You know, where do we want to go with this? Because ultimately, this awareness piece is, from my point of view, I want the people to write a check. I want them to help our students, I want them to help our faculty with equipment. And, you know, probably our biggest recent success is putting Dr. Mitchell in the magazine. Each of our presidents have had endowed scholarships, at least the four that I have worked for. And when Dr. Mitchell, you know, decided to retire, you know, her story is invaluable. If we attended Night of Stars, you know, you can hear the story of, not many community colleges can say that a president started as a secretary and worked their way up. She has a 35, you know, 30-year career here, and she understands it. And I'll tell you what, the foundation and the donors loved that magazine. And I ran into her office about a week after we put it out, we, I got a call from a donor that gave $10,000... that gave $10,000 in addition to what she normally gives, has an endowment, supports our Three Plus One program, and wrote a $10,000 check to her returning adult students. So each of the presidents have kind of worked with me to say, you know, what's there, what's important to them? And, you know, Dr. Prue had hers, J.D. Ross had First Generation. Judy has always been a big proponent of returning adult students. So whenever we have our fundraisers and stuff, we do the baskets, the money for, it has helped 15 to 20 students a year, her scholarship. So from a fundraising point of view, I wanted to take that story and put it out to the public to see what kind of funds we can get to support, because ultimately, we're going to support returning adult students with that publication. We had a former trustee, Deb Dole, who was way back, called when she got the magazine and said, "I just want you to know, I just talked to my attorney, I wrote the scholarship in my will." We had, well, I'll do it as part of my report, but that magazine hasn't been out how long?
Only two weeks.
Two weeks. I've raised $18,500 for returning adult students. I just saw in the board packet that one of our endowment directors wrote a thank-you note, a note to Judy after reading the article. So we think about, what do we want on the cover? What do we want the themes? What, you know, what is going to bring awareness, and ultimately, what is going to bring in money? I worry about, you know, what is going to make the person read the piece and then help the college support our students and faculty? So I don't, is this your last?
That's the last slide?
Okay. So if you have any, yeah.
I have a question. We also have the Fall Guide. Is there a Spring Guide also, or just Fall?
Yeah, there's, I thought someone might ask that. This is what our Spring Guide looks like, goes out to all households. So we have Fall, Spring, and Summer.
So that one is the one that has like the summer programs for children that we offer?
No.
No.
That's Continuing Education. So like Kids College and Continuing Education courses.
Okay, so that's, the Continuing Education is not even on this presentation, right?
No, no.
There's a lot of publications we do. I mean, yeah, I mean, appeals, we do Spring Appeal, Scholarship Appeal, you know, there's, we have 20 slides.
Who pays for the Connections Magazine? Does the foundation pay for that? Cover the cost of it?
We pay for it.
The college pays for it.
So that is costing about $26,000 to send out? And we only send it once a year?
Twice.
Twice.
We send Connections twice a year?
Yes.
So we're spending $26,000 twice a year?
Mm-hmm.
And we're also, hold on. Okay, and then the Community Impact, that one, is $6,726, because we send it out three times a year, right?
Correct.
The concern that was brought to my attention from taxpayers is that the Connections, or I'm sorry, the, yeah, the Connections and the Community Impact came out relatively close at the same time. And I totally respect and honor Dr. Mitchell and her years of service. I do as a board member, but some of the community taxpayers were really concerned that their tax dollars are going to highlight one person. The Community Impact, it goes out to 720 people. And you said it goes out to community leaders, businesses, and who else?
That's, the hard copy goes out to that many. The electronic copy goes to way more, like the...
The hard copy, I'm talking about the hard copy. But who does the hard copy go to?
It depends. My office does the queries. So we have a razor-edge database, and we keep all the addresses and everything. So anything that goes out from the college, they come to my office, because we do the cleanups for, if somebody has passed, we take them out. Every time we have a graduation, we put those new people in as alumni. When people give a gift, we keep what they give to, what they graduated from. So we do a query. So there's a conscious thought, every single piece, depending on what's in it, we think, what age group would this go to? What, you know, and so we do, it's different every single time. So every Community Impact piece in every magazine has a different query, depending on what the audience is.
So if this is going to community leaders and businesses, I can tell you for sure, I didn't receive it. And I'm a trustee. So if you could please check your list and see if my address is on there, if you have the right address, because I did not receive either one of them. And I heard about this from other people, and they shared theirs with me, and I thought, I didn't even know about this until somebody gave me their hard copy, and I thought, oh, I didn't know. Honestly, I didn't know.
Yeah, it should, it should go to your email address, and typically, correct me if I'm wrong, I know whenever we've had a new publication, we include those in the board packet that you receive, so...
In the board packet, yeah, it might have been in the board packet, but I focus on this. I focus on this, you know, I know there's a lot of other inserts, and when we get here, there's other things that are waiting for us here that are not in our packet. So I didn't see the hard copy, and it wasn't mailed to me. But the concern I'm hearing from my constituents is that they are not happy that both pieces were mailed out highlighting just one person, and it's taxpayer money that we're spending. I mean, we're even questioning if we should have an ADA sign language interpreter. We're raising tuition, and that is a cost that is a taxpayer dollar cost. So that's, I'm sharing with you information that's been given to me, and I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but that's just, you know, don't shoot the messenger. That's just what I'm hearing from my constituents.
Okay, appreciate it.
So, and the money that I know that you raised for the foundation, that's going to the foundation to help for scholarships. That money that you got from there is not going to pay for the Connections, right, for the magazine itself or the cost?
The college supports, the college supports my whole office, but the amount that's given back is, you know, immeasurable. I mean, a million dollars worth of scholarships and equipment and all of that, so that's all within the, you know...
But let me add, did you get the appeal for Dr. Mitchell's scholarship?
No.
In a gold envelope?
Mm-hmm. I did.
And you?
No.
I did not.
I would like to say that, you know, I've been on this board for a year, and when I first started, I specifically remember praising the board in general, I was new, praising you for the Facts foldout, as well as the Connections Magazine, and that everyone loved it. I think that there is this one instance where we may have had some community members that were unhappy that we had focused on Judy. However, she is retiring, she is our president. I don't think that it was too out-of-the-box for us to have focused on her. And last meeting, you spoke out and you said, "Well, are we going to do the same thing for our new president?" So, you know, I think that if you're open to doing it for a new president, I don't know why you're so against doing it for Judy. She has spent 30 years at this college. You did miss the Night of the Stars, but not only did she start working here as a secretary and make it up to president, she actually graduated from here, which I don't know any other community colleges can. And like our foundation and our cabinet members have already spoken about, is that the amount of contributions that they did get back. Now, that may not, so all in all is what they're saying is, this is what we spend on this, and yes, it may not be the cost of paying for it, however, they are receiving money towards student scholarships that will be an endowment, and from the college scholarship, like the JD Ross, excuse me, sorry, tell them I said that, but JD Ross, that will be a continuing scholarship. So anyone that does support Judy...
Dr. Prue was on the front cover back when she passed away, and her endowment is over $120,000.
And so now that will be a continuing thing as well
Yeah.
for Dr. Mitchell, where this scholarship, anyone who did support her and did appreciate the magazine, will be able to send money. So, you know, maybe next time, before they put a president on, they can bring it to the board, but I think that we've spent enough time on this topic.
Well, I'm not, thank you for your comments, Trustee Lee, and I'd like to respond to that, is that the reason I couldn't go to the Night of Stars, I didn't miss it because I was negligent, but that was my deceased father's birthday, and he's been gone for just about seven months now. So I had other priorities that day. Second of all, when I mentioned about Dr. Namua, that was before I even knew what the cost involved was. Had I known the cost, I wouldn't have even brought that up. That's why I was asking, what is this costing? And I'm not saying don't honor Dr. Mitchell, no, but all 36 pages were, she was on every single one of them, to the point where people thought that the Connections Magazine was the Spring and Fall Guide. They thought it was the Fall Guide, and they were looking for like courses, and they went through all the pages, and there was nothing there. That's why there was some confusion. It's like, what do you guys mail out? Do you guys mail out the Fall Guide, or Connections, or both, and how often? And as a board member, I don't know how often we send out these pieces, and yeah, maybe they should come to the board, especially if this is the cost involved, because now that I know we spend $52,000 a year on Connections alone.
I just am wondering how you didn't know that.
I didn't.
When we first started the board, they've done very thorough, you know, when I first started, I mean, I may not have paid attention to all of this information, but they've done very thorough reviews before. So I just think that this whole topic is being brought up, because in my, what I am getting a feeling from you, and you've mentioned it multiple times, is that your, the constituents that had reached out to you, which none have reached out to me, I don't know if anybody else has been reached out to by any constituents that was unhappy about the magazine, but we have now spent quite a long time on this topic.
That's fine, we have to.
So can we please move on?
Yeah, we can move on.
Dan, do you mind?
I'd like to add something positive.
Mm-hmm.
Dan? I want to say that my constituents were very excited about the last one, because, of course, Judy is from New Lennox. The constituents in my territory loved it, they thought it was a great honor to bestow about someone who had been here for a long time for employment and has done so much for the college. And also, I'm going to mention this, because the foundation has done so much, and Kristi, you've done so much to raise so much money. This cost is miniscuous compared to what you have raised and what you have given back to our students who needed laptops, remote access. You guys were there for food, for service, for gift cards. There is, it's just immeasurable.
It's not being questioned.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking. And it's just been unbelievable, if we're looking at the expense considered to what they've given out.
Different things.
And I look at the fact, too, that it's been immeasurable of a compliment for all the foundation people to be involved, you know, the donors and that. I'd like to ask this, because at Providence, I'm a donor for Providence. Do we send out something? Because I get all your publications, I've got everyone, and my kids get theirs, because they're alumni, too. Do we get anything that identifies the donors and the groups that they're in? Not the exact amount that they donate, but I know that more people donate now because they see what Providence sends out with their envelope that says, "Oh, I see so-and-so gave this much in that category, I might think about doing it." And they've had people doing it, which has elevated the donations in that time.
Right, it's in our annual report, they're all broken up by how much they give.
Good. And then I'm going to mention, I'm going to mention this, too. I was on the ACCT Central Committee call this afternoon, and his name is David Connor from the ACCT, was mentioning how last month, which was totally devoted to Community College Month, they had social print, online, other media throughout the U.S. during April, they had over 4,000 posts on Twitter, IG, Instagram, and 12 million-plus impressions. Is there any chance that we could find out, because I know you're on LinkedIn, we're on Instagram, we're on all those social media, can you give us some data to show us how many hits we get, so we see what marketing is doing and how viable you are doing in that position of getting that information out? Because I think we need to keep with positive, we need to erase negatives, we've got to keep with a positive mode, and I'll conclude by saying I think we need to stay positive.
Yeah, I want to stay positive as well, but the facts are the facts, and this is why this board is here, to discuss the budget. And if we could maybe, if you could bring this to the board, we would like to see what is going to go inside, the content of that, because like I said, and there's no problem, what I heard is, if there were maybe the schedules of the courses and something about the front cover, Dr. Mitchell, that's great, but all 30 some odd pages were about one person. And people were like, "We thought we were going to get something different, and this is what we received." So that's the only thing, the cost, and if that could be shared with the board before, just so we know what we're spending money on, because I was called out, "How much is this costing the college?" I'm like, "I don't know, I really didn't know." And I shouldn't be made to feel bad by any board member for bringing this up, and I don't feel bad. So yeah, we can move on now, thank you.
Good, yes, please move on. We have anything else?
Yes, one more.
Yes, sir.
You do. Okay, perfect. Let me lower my head.
And she mentioned to us the amount of touch...
Can you hear me?
Yeah. You're a business owner, I'm a business owner, we know that one piece of advertisement doesn't bring our business anything.
I agree.
It's the multiple touchpoints. And so what she's saying, she's focusing on crisscrossing all the targeted groups, all the budget together.
I know what she's saying, I understood everything.
Okay, well then, then let me finish this. If we are going to ask to be part of every decision she makes in marketing...
Not every, just that one.
Well, then where does it stop?
Over one.
If we're going to hold the president accountable for her staff, that's the president that should be looking at what they do, not us. Okay? The minute we take ownership of that, then it's us.
I'm not taking ownership, I'm asking a question.
You are, if you're asking them to bring to us anything for approval.
In a retreat, yes.
It should go to Dr. Mitchell.
They bring everything.
All right, all right, all right. No, just, yeah, so anyway, I don't want to see, or have anything to do with the decisions they make, putting it into the book. They are very successful at what they do, there are multiple touchpoints, not every single person's going to read every single document. We know our advertising budgets in our business, some of it goes right in the garbage can at the mailbox. They open it up, it's garbage day, it goes right in there, we know that.
We're small businesses, and it's not taxpayer dollars.
It doesn't matter, it's human nature. It's human nature. So we're looking to hit multiple touchpoints, and I think they do a fine job. She explained to us early on, and it's probably the workshop I was in with Michelle, what all these touchpoints are and why. Not everyone needs to see every single one, but they're going to get them all, and then hopefully, in the back of...
But they both came out at the same...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. In their mind, I want them to associate higher learning with Joliet Junior College, and that's what all these documents are doing.
Yes, they do.
And I don't want to have to be policing what these documents are. I think they do a great job. We hold the president accountable, the president holds them accountable. The minute we're leapfrogging who's responsible for signing off or checking the box, we are way beyond our boundary as trustees.
No, we have to look at the budget, and how we're spending them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Done this to death.
And we bring back what the constituents tell us.
Done this to death.
Okay.
Let's move on.
You had one more person, I think, Garcia.
Yes, yes, this is Trustee Garcia. Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. First, thank you so much for the presentation, and I think, I'm not going to repeat everything that has been already stated, but I think this is a valid question in terms of the cost. We're really conscious about the cost for a lot of different things, and again, that's our job, so I don't understand what the issue is with asking questions about the cost when that is our responsibility. Again, we're not going to be keeping an eye on every single little thing on what they print, like word by word, but at the end of the day, we have every right, as well as the taxpayers, to understand what the cost is associated with different things at the college. That is all, thank you.
All right. Everybody's got that now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly, for everything, and you do a great job, you do, thank you.
All right, and just in time, 2.1, moment of silence.
Chairman and Board, I'd like to request a moment of silence this evening for the following. Alan Hostert, retired EEAS professor, Joseph R. Shatina, friend to the foundation donors, John Jack O'Connell, uncle to Chairman O'Connell, Rena Reyes, mother of Maribel Ruiz, financial aide, and David Katron, retired faculty Agriculture Horticulture Department.
1.3, recognition of special guests. What do you think, Judy?
I think we have all special guests this evening. We have a crowded room, so that's great.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, we're all special here, so we'll just keep being special and go to 1.4, Selected Reports, 1.4.1, recognition of designation June as LGBTQ.
Okay, I'd like to ask, invite Skylar Shamproni, is an Orthotics and Prosthetics Technology major, and the current president of the OPT Club. Skylar is also the vice president of the Collegiate Club Council Board. Upon graduating, Skylar is looking to work full-time at Hanger as a prosthetic technician. Skylar?
Um, so I am going to read the proclamation. Uh, whereas Joliet Junior College would like to officially recognize June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning LGBTQ plus Pride Month to acknowledge and celebrate the history of those who have made and continue to make valuable contributions in our society and in ensuring progress and lasting equality for LGBTQ plus individuals. Whereas June as, June will act as a time of remembrance to honor the historic and revolutionary events that occurred at the Stonewall Inn in June nineteen sixty-nine, um, which laid the foundation for the ongoing equality movement in regards to LGBTQ plus community. This month will serve as a time of personal reflection for the LGBTQ plus community and their allies towards the effort, sacrifices, and vic- victories of those individuals. Whereas June will be a time of celebration for the LGBTQ plus community at Junior, Joliet Junior College for the progress made since Stonewall and the resilience and determination of the individuals in the LGBTQ plus community. For their continued efforts to raise awareness in regards to the needs of the LGBTQ plus community and create improvement. Whereas during LGBTQ plus Pride Month, uh, we state our promise to uphold the freedom, dignity, and the self-esteem of all individuals within this community and promise to dedicate ourselves to protecting them against all forms of discrimination, oppression, and hatred. LGBTQ plus Pride Month reiterates that LGBTQ plus rights are human rights and Joliet Junior College stands with and will continue to support the community to accept nothing less than a full equality. Now, therefore, it will, it be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number Five Two Five, um, Joliet Junior College Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook State of Illinois does hereby recognize and honor June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month, adopted this day eleventh, adopted this eleventh day of May twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
We have a motion?
Second.
A second? Okay. Good, can we have a roll?
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes. Thank you. One point four point two, Faculty Union Report. Dr. Marsink.
Thank you, Chairman O'Connell. Uh, it's always nice to address the board and those in attendance. Uh, hopefully I will be attending these in person very shortly. Uh, I did want to say just a few things. Uh, one is I do want to just follow up on the proclamation of LGBTQ plus, uh, community for, uh, designating June as, as their month. Uh, that's incredibly important for us and our community, the entire community. And, uh, I also want to make sure that in this time of a lot of stress, uh, all around, uh, that we do everything we can to protect and to strengthen the equal protection clause in the Fourteenth Amendment, uh, which is very important for the, the LGBTQ community and other communities. We are losing some great faculty this semester. I noticed that, uh, and we have over the last couple of years. And I noticed that on the agenda tonight, there are a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, people who are coming up for approval. I really hope, see that happen. Uh, there's tremendous a lot of, amount of work that goes into searching through HR, uh, through the committees, et cetera, to bring in the best people and the best fit for JJC. Uh, and the one thing I, and I, I know this sounds hollow sometimes, but I, I, it's difficult, but I do pledge that we will continue to try to diversify our faculty as much as possible going forward. Uh, I know there are a lot of efforts right now in that direction. Uh, I don't think we have been as successful as we would like to be, um, but it's not because of a lack of, of trying. So I think that's incredibly important for our students to see, uh, people in front of the room who they, they, uh, who are from their community or, or who, who look like them. So, um, I, I really hope to see that happen and, but I, I do know that we have some excellent, excellent people on the list tonight. Um, commencement, obviously that, I'm sure that'll be talked about a lot tonight, but as a faculty member, I just want to say, we're really, really pleased to see that we are now, we are going to have a, a, a real commencement this spring. Our students really desperately need it. I also think it was a wise decision, um, by the administration, uh, and through Bob Morrison, his committee, uh, to split it up into two separate, uh, events. Uh, and the way, and from what I've heard, we'll have well over five hundred people, uh, students who will be graduating. I'm sure you'll have more information on that later. Uh, and what I like is that it was split in a way that, uh, it's almost equal in numbers on the early, uh, the early event, which is, I believe at twelve-thirty, and then the later event early in, in the evening. So, uh, it'll, it'll provide a certain amount of safety for everybody, but will also give people an opportunity to, to celebrate. Uh, it's so important to be able to celebrate. I, I, not, not to go too long, but I have students who've, who have, who are graduating who I have never met. Um, I literally physically have never met them. And, um, I had a student come in to do a presentation the other day because they have an option in my classes to take the class online or face-to-face. And many of them chose the, uh, online or, or a hybrid format. A student came into my class, I'd never met, I'd never met the student and didn't recognize the name initially because I didn't hear the name correctly. It was a rather awkward moment. Um, I hope to never have that experience again. I truly do. Uh, I mean, we teach because we want to help students and we want to work with students and we want to get to know students and we want to do what we can to help them move along in their, not only their education, but in their careers. And, uh, it's really hard when you, you don't really get to know them like, like, like we, like, we like to. So, um, let's see if there's anything else. Actually, I think that's, uh, that's all I, oh, I did want to thank, uh, Kelly Roder Tenelli for her, for her report on marketing this evening. Uh, it was extensive and, and comprehensive and I appreciate that. Other than that, um, I wish everybody, I'm sure we'll see you again in a month or so, but if I don't see you folks, have a wonderful summer and, uh, and let's all regenerate and come back strong in the fall. Thank you.
I have a question for Dr. Marsink.
Sure.
Uh, Dr. Marsink, you mentioned, you started by saying that we will continue to diversify our, our efforts, uh, when hiring our staff. Were you part of the committee?
No, I was not. Which committee are you talking about?
But you, you know, you referred to, you said you noticed that we have, we're hiring a lot of, uh, great people.
No, no, no. You misunderstood what I said. What I said was, is we're continuing the effort to diversify our faculty. That is a goal of mine, it's a goal of our faculty, it's a goal of our administration and a goal of HR. Uh, we have, and I acknowledge that we have not been as successful as I like to, which, which we had been or, and we need to do better. But it's not for lack of trying, it's not for lack of effort, it's not a lack, uh, for lack of looking for new ways to, uh, to bring in, uh, different, uh, new and different candidates from diverse communities. That effort is ongoing. I'm just acknowledging we haven't been as successful as I, I wish we had been, have been.
Thank you. That's exactly what I understood. So I did not misunderstand. That's what I understood. My next question is, were you or are you a part of the, of the committees that hire these, um, any of our faculty and staff?
I haven't been as, a committee, uh, on a faculty search for a little while, but that, that rotates within departments depending on your department. So we haven't had many hires in the English department. Uh, so if, if they do, I likely would be a, a part of one of those committees. But because I also teach in a kind of a unique area, I teach journalism, not English as much, uh, I do some, uh, a lot of the people on those committees tend to be, uh, full-time English faculty who, uh, and who, who would probably be out of choices at times. But I have been on committees, uh, to, to, uh, I was on a number of committees in the last few years, but as far as, uh, hiring a faculty, I haven't been on a faculty search for a little while.
Okay, thank you. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bob.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome. You're welcome. One point four point three, Adjunct Faculty Union Report. Ms. Disco.
Good to see you in person.
I know, I was just thinking the same thing. Thank you. Nice to see you. I was here last month, but I was online for a long time. Um, and it's, it's really nice to be back with all of you. Um, it's also echoing what Dr. Marsink said, really nice to be teaching face-to-face this semester. Um, the, the, the whole frustration of seeing students online who maybe even never turn their cameras on. Um, you know, it was, it was, it's been a very frustrating time for all of us. And so it, it's very nice to be back and looking forward to continuing on this trajectory. Um, I don't really have much of a report. We're wrapping up this semester, things are going well, um, and looking forward to summer, which seems to have arrived this week. Um, and, but I, I'm not going to be able to attend the June meeting and so I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Mitchell for everything that she has done for this college, for the way that she has worked with all of us. Um, the, the leadership comes from the top and she's done an extraordinary job. And this, the last two years has been an incredible challenge. It's been an incredible challenge for us doing what we do and we don't have the responsibility of the whole college. And, and so carrying that burden and doing such a stellar job, I think deserves recognition. And I wanted to say that today because I wouldn't be able to be here next time. So thank you very much. I appreciate it and wish you the best always.
Thank you.
And with that, I thank you for the opportunity from, to speak to the board and have a good summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. One point five minutes, approval of minutes of the regular meeting, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
I have a comment. And we include under the ICCTA report, pictures of the attachments and show an attachment for what was presented with these, those slides that I did with the whole presentation.
Include.
It just says that I did a report, but it would be nice for the public to see what the report really entailed. You guys all saw the eight pages that went with this, the report that I provided.
Do you like the pages printed, like to be included in the minutes?
Be included as an attachment. I mean, they were good informational pages so that the public, if they're looking at ours, they can see what we actually do delve into and we're looking at things like that.
Okay, we can handle that. We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik? And Trustee O'Connell?
Yes. Thank you. One point seven, approval of the, no, wait a minute. One point six, communications. Ms. Rogers, any communications?
No communications, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. One point seven, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
And Trustee O'Connell?
Yes. One point eight, consent agenda, approval of consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And I'd like to pull an item, please.
Sorry?
I'd like to pull an item.
Which one would you like to pull?
I'd like to, uh, two point two, all of it.
Two point two. All of two point two. You mean from two point one, two point two point one to two point two?
Point ten.
Point ten?
Minus two point two point eight.
Minus eight, but all the rest of them?
Just for the record, Mr. Chair, two point two point nine was stricken in the green sheet. So it would be two point two point one, two point two point two, two point two point three, two point two point four, two point two point five, two point two point six, two point two point seven, and two point two point ten.
No, go ahead then. Let's, let's, uh, soldier on, on, uh, two point, two.
We need a vote on the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Which has been motioned in a second.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes. Two point two point one.
So moved.
Discussion?
So the reason, I pulled them all because it's the same concern and I don't want to repeat it multiple times. And it's not a concern really, it's more of a comment. So, and it's something positive that I, I like to see that here we are approving appointments of assistant professors and associate professors, um, in this, uh, two point two section here. And I was really happy to see that there's, it looks like there's nine hires that are being, uh, recommended and five of these are adjuncts. So I was happy to see that we are hiring some of our hardworking adjuncts and giving them the opportunity to be full-time, um, faculty here. Um, and then if you can maybe just share with the board a little bit about the difference between the assistant professor versus associate professor?
Dr. Farmer, uh, Dr. Gray is not here this evening, um, so I don't know if you can respond, or Dean Zuccarello?
I would recommend for Dean Zuccarello.
Okay, Dean Zuccarello, you're representing Dr. Gray this evening. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Um, that's a really good question, actually. The way our contract is organized, faculty move through those ranks of assistant, associate, and full professor, usually based on years of service to us or experience, um, in industry. And then also compared, um, kind of like, there's a matrix, cross-referencing that experience then with the degree that they hold. So, so for instance, somebody who is a doctorate and a few years of experience is likely a full professor versus somebody with a degree and a master's degree and maybe a handful of years of experience is maybe an assistant or an associate professor. But it's something we negotiate out in the full-time faculty contract. So if you want to actually see the granular on that, the place to look is for the end of the full-time faculty contract.
Thank you, and these are full-time tenure track, both of them, right?
I, I'm not sure what you're seeing, but I would, if you, if you're hearing terms like that, then that's usually what that indicates, yes.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what they had on, on both of them, I just wasn't sure what the difference was. But if you're saying it's mostly because of the years of, of work experience, cross-reference with their degrees, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that was my, that was my question, why were some assistants and some associates? But that, that explains it, and, I mean, because I know not everybody on this board has a teaching background. And even myself with a teaching background, it still is a little confusing. So I'm just asking for clarification, that's all.
Yep, absolutely, and different institutions do it differently too. So even if you have a lot of experience, it's not always the same.
Okay. And one other comment is that I noticed too, that I believe every candidate that's being hired is a woman. So kudos to women. But for our diversity, I guess maybe there were no qualified males in the pool of applicants for any of these jobs?
Again, that's what we talk about all the time, the process, we go through the process and we hire the best qualified candidate.
Right.
So in this case, and you know, all too often, maybe depending on the discipline, you may have more female rather than male. You might see a shift, you know, we just recently hired our first full-time female chef in the Culinary Arts Department, which was wonderful, it's the first time. So again, you know, kudos to our faculty, you know, to our HR team, we continue to look for diversification across the board. But in this case, the females were a little dominant.
Very, a hundred percent. All of them are female, which I was really excited to see, but at the same time, you know, I'm just looking at the overall picture, like, were there? But then again, many were nursing, there were quite a few nurses.
Right, and remember diversity goes beyond male and female.
I understand that, I understand that, I understand perfectly what diversity means. So yeah, I just, you know, when we look at diversity, we look at more than just gender, more than just race, there's so much more involved in that.
I'm not really surprised by that, because my wife does ninety-nine point nine 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 percent things better than I do.
She probably makes ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the decisions too, so. Good, okay.
Oh, I have a question, Patty, is this similar to like K through twelve, when you were talking on your first portion of where they step up, where they have the steps as they go through K through twelve to get more income, based on that? Is this a similarity that can be associated, how they're doing it for higher education?
It likely is, I'm not that familiar with the K-12 structure, but I would imagine it's, it's probably the same kind of idea where every, and to your point, I think, folks who start out here as an assistant professor, as they progress here with years of experience, move through those other stages. So, right, so same kind of?
It is very similar then, because as they get different hours and accreditations, and they go into the masters, and they go into the type, type seventy-five, it's where they graduate up and their steps go up, so it's stepping, I mean, that's the words they use through K through twelve, stepping, the step stones.
Yep. Yep, and you can, you can see it, um, sorry, Bob Marsting just texted me, it's on page eighty-six of the contract, if you're interested in, in again, getting kind of more granular, and then you can see how everybody kind of moves through those stages.
I'm going to show that. Alicia, does this cover all of your things?
Yes.
For that?
We can move on.
Well, I'm going to amend my, my motion, that it's for two point, two point one through two point two point one zero, so that it is amended to include, be inclusive of all of them?
I think it would be two point two point one through two point two point seven, and then two point two point ten, because two point two point eight and two point two point nine were stricken.
Yeah, but if she said this is?
No, 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 but no, one of them, two point two point eight is retirement of one, and that's not, that wasn't part of my discussion. I'm not questioning the retirement.
So if you're amending it to both of all of us to approve?
I'm still keeping them all in.
The motion is amended to include the remaining two point two items.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Need a vote.
Let me have a vote, please.
Through the roll call.
Okay, all right. Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Bzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Aye, abstain.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes. All right, now, we're at four point five, we have to address this, four point five, right? Board of Trustees, approval of Dresden Nuclear Power Station Real Property Tax Assessment Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No, then we'll have a roll call, please.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Bzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Abstain.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
And Trustee O'Connell?
Yes. Four point six, Board of Trustees' Approval, the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement Creating LSP- Kendall Energy LLC Taxing Bodies Consortium.
So moved, for the consortium?
Second.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Bzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Abstain.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes. Four point seven, Board of Trustees' Adaptation of F, of FY23, a tentative, a tentative budget.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, Kelly, please.
Trustee Bzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
No.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
You missed me.
Trustee Broderick, I'm sorry. I apologize.
All right. We're down to seven point one, new business?
I think.
We have six point one.
Six point one.
Six point one, new busi, new business, old business, six point one, policy consideration.
I'm the one that asked to discuss that. Currently, policy, and I'm going to bring this to Michelle's concern and attention, for you guys to look at through policy. Policy one point four five point oh one is currently what I am concerned about.
Say that one more time.
It's one point four five point zero one.
Thank you.
And currently, we have a policy that is for, that needs consideration for how to properly place items on the agenda. Currently, we are, it's in conjunction with the Robert Rules of Order, but we definitely need to identify the methods and the guidelines and the policies of putting something on the agenda. Otherwise, we are leaving the president to just not have any answers or abilities. We, as the board, need to make that decision if something should go on. And in our experience before, we've always had where it's brought up the month before. And the month before, then, the board makes a decision whether they want something on the agenda or not, so that it can be followed and we're not surprised with a new item on the agenda. So that's why I'm bringing it up, so there's no surprises, we fall into identifying methods and agendas and policies and guidelines on how to put something on, so that we're not sitting here all shocked all of a sudden when we see something on an agenda. And I think we can do that and upgrade one point four five point oh one.
I'll take a look at it, so what exact, have, do you have, have you looked at the policy?
Yeah, Carl and I talked, I'll let Carl give you some background, because Carl was the one that I had spoken to in regards to it. It's very general, but it hits a lot of areas, but it doesn't define the policies and the agenda, or the guidelines on how to put things on the agenda.
We have two policies for the agenda, one point four five and one point oh one and oh two, ones for the board, ones for the citizens. And Trustee Broderick was looking to create guidelines for how things get placed on there, so there's more, a more clearly defined process, not only for board members, but for citizens, if they want to get something on the agenda.
Okay, so that's why I wanted to bring that up, thank you.
So Maureen, is there currently not a process? Is that what you're saying, does that policy not outline a process, is that what you're saying?
It doesn't, it doesn't give you the guidelines on how to do it. So, we need to define, and normally, it's always been the month before that we discussed it.
According to what?
That we discussed it, and if there was a general consensus to move it on to the agenda, Chairman Wonderlick would do that. We need to make sure that we have something in print, so that we do follow the guidelines, not just go for whatever.
You want us to create a policy, basically?
Yes.
Do you have any language that you want to use?
Pardon me?
You have any language that you want to use?
I think we'll follow Robert's Rules of Order on that, I think that it's just not in the policy stated how Robert's Rule of Order, so I think what she's asking is to just go over Robert Rules of Order, and then let's look at the policy and add in.
Yeah.
That's fine, we'll look at it.
It's just to help us all, you know, understand it better, so that we know how to put items on the agenda, and the citizens do too.
Yeah, because even if an item does get on the agenda, we still have to discuss it. We have the opportunity to discuss it and vote on it or not, at that time, anyway.
Right, but it should, it should be where it's identified in the meeting prior to it being on the agenda, so that if someone does, and it can be brought up in old and new business, if it should be on the agenda or not, not laying the responsibility on the president to put it on when we don't know about it. And it's just clearing the air to make sure that we know what we want on the agenda, not to be surprised at the meeting. So I'm just giving, so we have guidelines on it.
We'll review it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my only concern.
Thank you. Seven point oh, new business, first reading board policy, no action taken, seven point one.
I'm going to go over them, just really quickly, and print out anything, and my printer's out of ink, sorry, I wrote notes. Okay, so meeting of the board was the one with the most changes. And that is just basically stating that we will have five minutes on any topic that is pulled or discussed, three minutes to introduce your, how, where you stand on the topic, and then two minutes rebuttal. That was the one with the most changes. American with Disabilities Act is pretty standard, no real changes on that one. Staff personnel states the categories of personnel that we employ. Student participation in college activities states that the board empowers the college to establish. College organization and activities, pretty standard there. Student travel cites our board policy for travel, and it's, so it's, it's really high level. Not too much, it's more in the policy, or in the procedures there. And then the Drug-Free Schools for Community Act, the biggest change was just due to the change in the law for the marijuana. But we just said that you're, you know, even though it has been legalized, you're still not allowed to do it on campus. So that is a high-level overview of those policies that will be going through next month, if anyone wants to look at them.
Real quick on seven one, the meeting of the board, you mentioned there's five minutes for a topic, right?
Yes.
Per trustee for discussion. That does not include, though I want to clarify, that does not include the time, if it's a presentation that's being given, that is separate. Because today I felt like I was shut down before my time, because maybe the presentation took a while, but that wasn't me bringing up the concern that I was given from a constituent. So I just want us to be very respectful of our policies and follow them as well. Thank you.
Eight, old business, second reading.
That was on the consent.
That was on the consent agenda, all right, good. Nine point oh, reports, that's on board policies. So, nine point one, representative to the JJC Foundation.
Christy Mulvey? Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the trustees who attended the Night of Stars event last month, I really appreciated your support, and I know that our donors really appreciated your personal thank yous. We had two hundred and twenty-four attend the event, and I'm very appreciative that we had so many JJC faculty that were there to support our 2022 award winners. The scholarship application process closes on May fifteenth for fall scholarships. Reminders are being sent out to students to remind them of the deadline dates. My alumni team will be at both graduations, handing out a gift to each of our graduates. Each diploma cover was stuffed with certificates inside to announce that there have become an alum and a place for them to stay connected and for us to get their future addresses, so hopefully they will turn into donors. Our annual golf outing will be held on Friday, July fifteenth, at Nettle Creek Club in Morris. We only have a few foursomes left, so if you're interested in golfing, please let us know as soon as possible. I'm pretty sure we're going to sell out soon. On May thirty-first, we're having a JJC night at the Slammers Ballpark. Tickets were given to all employees that participated in this year's employee giving campaign. If you would like to attend on the thirty-first of May, please let my office know by Friday, the tickets are only two dollars each. Dr. Mitchell will be throwing out the first pitch, Wiley will be there, and we already have a hundred and seventy-five employees that gave to the college and are signed up to go to the ballpark. This year's employee giving campaign was in April. As you know, it was a ballpark baseball theme, and we raised over ninety-five thousand dollars in, in just that month through employee giving. And a majority of those gifts go to our student emergency account. Tomorrow, we're excited that representatives from Hollywood Casino will be here making a significant check presentation to support their, their scholarship, and we're always very grateful to our community partners. The next foundation board meeting will be next Wednesday at seven thirty in the president's boardroom, where our, the foundation board will be approving our next year's budget. Unless there's any question, that's the end of my report.
The only question I have, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
At the Night of Stars?
Mm-hmm.
When you're sitting there watching now, from where I was sitting, my back was to the screen. Why don't we announce the names of the donors that we had stand?
Just because it goes on so long, and a lot of them are pretty humble, they don't like to, we used to have them come up and get gifts, but a lot of them are elderly and they don't want that attention, so we put it in the board, but a lot of our major gift owners are very humble and don't want that kind of a, so, you know, I can name several of them, and.
I'm just, just curious, I want to, you know?
No, we used to call them up individually and give them a gift, they don't want gifts, they don't want a lot of acknowledgement, they give, you know, for their specific things, but I agree, I, but, I don't know.
I just want to say it was a great night, it was, I made sure I got there early to shake hands with all of the donors, it was a pleasure, and like you said, did say, they're very quiet about who they are, they don't really want to be known too much, but it was, it was such a sweet night, you guys did a great job. And I think all the presentations, including Dr. Mitchell's, was really well, well-deserved, and all those that, the J.D. Ross one, this one for Judy, I think it was great, you did a great job.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. Nine point two, Representative ICCTA.
Thank you. On April twenty-ninth, we had our ICCTA Board Meeting of Representatives down in Springfield. What was discussed with advocacy was six community colleges are providing local workforce data to the ICCTA to help build a persuasive case for community college backglow of degrees in Illinois. We reviewed state legislation of interest to the community colleges, including Public Act 102-0697, which is paid COVID administrative leave for vaccinated educational personnel. The ICCTA and the Illinois Council of Community College Presidents worked with the governor's office to amend the act's original language to clarify the definition of education personnel. We were informed that the fiscal, the federal fiscal year 2023 appropriations process has begun. The Association of Community College Trustees is supporting a greater focus on mental health needs, big issue, mental health. I'd like to identify that we did have our successful nominating committee for 2022 and 2023 officers. I've been chosen as the Vice President of ICCTA, Sean Bolt from Highland for Treasurer, Bishop Wayne Dunning from Richland for Secretary. We'll vote on the June eleventh annual meeting that's going to be held in Chicago on that day, and all will be sworn in that day. We adopted the ICCT bylaws committees, proposed amendments regarding the appointment of candidates for the ACCT State Coordinator, which I am currently now, and I'm holding an office as well as the ACCT Coordinator, and it's a lot of duties that they decided to separate it out, so that the person that's the ACCT will not be an officer, and that one will have specific duties related to that function. We also learned that our new president-elect, Dr. Maureen Dunn from College of DuPage, her goals are going to be for 2022 and 2023 to elevate community college image, develop strategic partnerships with economic development agencies, expand ICCT's online offerings, identify consortiums, funding opportunities, broaden inclusion efforts, and include neurodiversity and establish new ICCT committees, so that we get more people involved than just the delegates. Reminder I want to give you that the upcoming annual convention for the ICCT, ICCT is June tenth to eleventh. Please let Kelly know if you are coming or not. And I'd also like to tell you that I did nominate Dr. Mitchell for the Meritus Award for Retiring Presidents, and she is going to be awarded the Meritus Award for a retiring president, based on all that she has done for the college for the twenty-six-plus years.
Thank you very much.
And I think they, did they contact you already to?
They have, and the reservations are made.
Good, okay, I'd want to make sure of that. And also, there is progress in regarding to the ICCT 2022 Strategic Plan. There is notable increase in participation in our ICCT committees and regional meetings. And we did adopt the association's FY23 budget, which puts the reserves back to a fifty percent. And then with regards to what's going on in Illinois with the budget, the budget now provides a fiscal year twenty-two, 2022, supplemental five percent increase for community colleges, which is included in the fiscal year 2023 budget. The fiscal will increase five percent in funding for adult education, career, and technical education. Fifteen point eight million is split this way, thirteen point two million, which is a five percent increase for college, community college operating grants, two point six million, which is another five percent increase for adult education and career and technical education. Funding for MAP grants increased by a hundred and twenty-two million and expands the program to include students seeking short-term credentials and certificates, as well as the increasing maximum grant award for students. This means low-income students in two thousand short-term CTE programs would become eligible for MAP grants. This would eliminate barriers for students seeking to upgrade skills or enter the workforce, and would help to better meet the needs of all community college students. The pipeline for advancement of healthcare workforce, the PATH, has got twenty-five million. This program is for students who will be able to obtain certificates and degrees in nursing. to obtain certificates and degrees in nursing and other higher-demand healthcare fields in the shortest possible time. Students will benefit from wraparound student support services. Programs will meet shortages of work, workers in the healthcare industry that have been exacerbated in the COVID-19 pandemic. And this will, much like to, much like the Workforce Equity Initiative model after that. Capital funds have been 1.9 million for new community college capital projects and 979 million for reappropriation of prior-year capital projects. And last was the federal relief funds re-appropriated. They include an unexpend- for the unex- unexpended federal relief funds of 87 million to gear early childhood grants and the College Bridge Grants, which is the Cure Fund. And that concludes that. Just remember, the only thing I'm gonna say is get registered. The ICCT Convention is in Chicago on the dates that I had stated, which was June 10th and June 11th. If you're going, connect with Kelly 'cause there is a timeframe of connecting for better rates for the um hotels and for the programs. And also too, I'm gonna mention this because this came up today at the uh ACC meeting and I'm gonna go back to my notes on that, so bear with me. For the convention that's gonna be in New York, let me bring it up. Okay, we have, and I know everybody would love to this, go to this one, the 2022 Governous Leadership Institute in Hawaii is from June 15th to 9- 18th in Honolulu, Honolulu, Hawaii. If you'd like to go and it's in your budget, please talk to Kelly. Its roles and responsibilities of the board, it's also on policy and fiduciary responsibilities, accountability and accreditation, best practices of highly effective boards and our workforce, current trendings for facing community colleges during this period of time. Um they're also seeking ACCT award nominations. Nominations are due in by June 13th. So if we have anyone to enter, and where's Kelly? Is Kelly, Kelly?
Mm-hmm.
We have any nominations for the ACC awards, the deadline is June 13th. And it includes the Board of Directors elections that will be on July 1st. Amendments to any of the bylaws of the ACT are by, due by July 1st and any resolutions are due by July 1st. The ACCT Convention is, bear with me, I have too many mis- notes on this stuff. It's in New York, October 26th to 29th. Um if we're going to do any proposals, Dr. Mitchell, if we're gonna do any proposals, I don't know if you wanna talk to the, the new acting one when he comes on in July. Uh deadline for proposals is May 13th. Uh best to reserve a room by May 20th. And if you do your registration for the November, the New York Conference, $200 early reduction fee if you do it by August 19th. And it's in the Marriott that is in Times Square. Lot of good topics that will be talked about for leadership for all of us as trustees. And I'm just giving that as a heads up so that you know that it's the 26th, the 26th to the 29th in New York City. And that concludes my reporting. And oh yeah, I should say, you did have this pamphlet for the grants. Because I had so much to report on everything else, I'm holding it back until the June meeting and it will be presented in your package for June. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine point three, Student Trustee Report. Mr. Stromborski, you're, you're a maiden voyage.
So first of all, hello. My name is Joshua Stromborski. I noticed that I really didn't, outside of the brief discussions that I've had, um talking with other trustees and uh my initial swearing in, I didn't really get a whole big of a chance to introduce myself. So I decided to take the next slide just to give a little bit about me, some context. So, my name is Joshua Stromborski, as stated before. Um I'm looking to major in physics. Um I have major involvement in student government. Um that's where I spend the majority of my time. Uh my career goals are focusing, I would love to work at Fermilab in the future. They're kinda like Argon. Argon's a little bit more well-known around here. Fermilab focuses more on the um high-energy particle side of things. They have really cool W boson and neutrino, never mind. So for a fun fact, um I'm an Eagle Scout with a bronze and gold palm. So that's something, it's, it was a very formative experience for me. So I just thought that would, I would bring a little bit of that. And that's a picture that was taken, oh, I think it was, I think it was Wednesday of last week where I got to meet uh Pete Budjic, which I thought was really, really cool. I managed to get on my chemistry course for that one. I really had to talk to my chemistry teacher. So, looking ahead as student trustee. So the major thing that I, I wanted to come into student trustee not, on top of needing experience, I wanted to see how higher institutions operate at this level. I also wanted to make sure that I properly represented the student body. And I'm sure you all remember a while back when David had his um poll that he showed up, the number one concern for students on campus, um barriers to their academics was mental health. And to me, that's the major concern that I feel like I need to address um as a representative of the student body. Um I'd also like to attend a lot more student events to get a more personal connection with the students on campus and to, well, you know, get around campus, understand what's going on. So these are just a couple of the things that I've attended thus far. I wasn't able to go to the Night of the Stars. Instead, I opted to instead come to campus and do some of the art stuff that was going on for Earth Week. So I went through the Arbor Day Walkthrough. So we walked through the Arboretum, Arbor Latin for tree. So it was a, so we went and just walked and talked about the trees. Um the only ones I was able to pick out were the white pines and the maples. So um but a lot of them were really, really cool. Um so Dark Waters, it was a movie. Um I'm not good with actors. I forget what his name is, but he plays Hulk in The Avengers. And it was about um PFOS, which are kinda, it's a manu- it's, it was the pollution in West Virginia using, they were manufacturing stuff for Teflon. So like a Teflon pan uses PFOS. And they found out that there were some barrels that were hidden, that were leaking, that got into the groundwater, that caused major environmental concerns. So that's what the movie was about. It was really cool, actually. Um and I recommend giving it a watch if you haven't seen it already. Um and then the NSLS introduction, uh or induction, not introduction, um was a ceremony for NSLS, which is a youth leadership um kinda training, um kind of a training organization. So it helps give students um the tools that they need to help succeed as future leaders. So those are some of the things that I attended. And here's some things that have been going on around campus, some of which I haven't been able to attend, but I felt nonetheless important to bring up. Empty bowls. Empty bowls was kind of a, was a luncheon where I, forgive me if I'm incorrect, but it was a luncheon basically that you have a donation of $10 and then you're able to use a ceramic bowl and eat lunch out of it, which was a really cool um opportunity for students and staff alike and basically anybody that was on campus. Um Coffee with a Cop happened. Um I was not there for it, but I was told it was very fun. Thank you, Amy. Um and then Stress Relief Week. Stress Relief Week was a, is a week, this week, where I think it was Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday, it should be up there, um that there were um therapy dogs that came in for students. So students were, had the opportunity to hang out with some therapy dogs. And I think 100 students came out for it, which was a pretty great number. And they also had free snacks, so that's always a good way to get students in. Um and so there was the therapy dogs and then the Wolves Wellness, which was pretty great, and the meet and greet tables. So some of the clubs and other things that were going on. Um there were some pictures of Dog Spa Day, I'll start with that. Dog Spa Day was a day, I think it was on Saturday. My dogs went. Um they were nice and clean and fluffy when they came back, which was very nice. I'm sure everybody has gotten a bit of the mud if they have dogs cleaning up. So it was very nice to get their nails cut and get all the built-up mud off of them. So that was pretty great. Um and then there was the journaling workshop and that was pretty cool. I, I was not able personally to attend it, but um Amy tells me that it was awesome. Uh David and Amy told me it was pretty cool. So The Blazer had a recent article. I'm not sure if the trustees get The Blazer. Do you guys get The Blazer in your, in your emails?
In Judy's messages, don't we? Isn't that where we get it? Blazer?
Do you get The Blazer? Does it come in the media report?
Yeah.
I'll have to check. I think so.
I think we've gotten it in your letters, your emails.
The students do a fantastic job for The Blazer. The students learn about Ramadan, I thought was incredibly, it was a really well-written and incredibly interesting article. Um I have no context for Ramadan, so it was very nice to learn a thing or two about what occurs and why it occurs for um for, for uh for the event. And then for student government. So we in, really was supposed to be in March, but it ended up getting pushed back due to um midterms. We did an overhaul of the constitution. So we sat down and we went through the constitution line by line and we changed some things that we thought needed to be changed. Um for example, going into the um, um coming out of the pandemic, a lot of clubs have had a slightly decreased amount of students that have been attending the clubs. So student government has gone down in size a little bit. And the constitution really wasn't built for the amount of students that we had. There were like 10 permanent positions and we had eight students in student government at, at the beginning. And I was like, well, you know, some of these we might not need or we might be able to combine a couple of these. So that was actually a pretty cool experience going through and having to alter a couple of things. Um and then the poster project, which were put up around campus for Mental Health Week. Um the poster project, basically, it was um poems that were, there, the author of the poems should be on the poster. It's just poems and um just a nice calming background. It wasn't meant to be, it wasn't meant to be like the kitten hanging there saying, you know, hang in there, you know, hanging from the tree. I was trying to avoid that kind of thing. And, and I think the project turned out. You'll see him around, dotted around this school. Um they're pretty cool. And then tonight, I think it was tonight, was a student development uh recognition event, which gathered student leaders from across campus and um and recognized their, their contributions to quality of life on campus and all the events that take place.
Was that today?
Um I believe that was today, yes.
It was earlier this afternoon.
And that is all. I won't take up any more of your time. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I hope I did all right. I talked too fast. I apologize.
Thank you.
You did great.
I apologize.
You did great, Joshua. Thank you.
Good for a maiden voyage. Thank you, Mr. Stromborski. Nine point four, Buildings and Grounds Report.
Buildings and Grounds. Tonight, we uh, we had a good meeting. Uh in construction currently, we're replacing the three J building elevators. I believe we're gonna start with the service elevator and one of the main elevators to start. And that starts here in mid-May. Uh that should hopefully be completed, I think, by, by the beginning of the fall semester. I think, I think we're gonna start the next elevator during, during the fall semester too. Is that right, Judy?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Uh we're also repairing the Leaky A Building storefront frames. They're ordered. They're not in yet. We're, we're taking on water with all this rain, but they're coming in soon, hopefully.
Mm-hmm.
Keep on being told that. And then, I think, tonight we improved uh some miscellaneous capital improvement projects for HVAC. Uh this is just various miscellaneous HVAC projects throughout the campus. Um the air handler unit replacement for, which is a CDV project, is gonna be starting construction. Um but does that, does it start soon? That starts before the summer? Is that the, or is that the?
The which one?
The CDV, the air handler, uh the AH.
Before summer?
Before summer?
No, after summer.
It's after summer?
We don't have a schedule for that yet.
Oh, that, that's, that's when they're, they're still releasing it, but they're, they're, but they're footing a good, good portion of that bill, right?
Correct.
So.
Yes.
The parking lot improvements will be started in May. Uh this parking lot improvements is for the ring road mostly. There's a lot of various damage to the road, so that'll be started in May. Uh and we're moving the Cisco Lab and Cyber Security Lab to North Campus, uh starting May construction, pending a board approval, which we approved tonight. Uh the campus police station um is still in holding mode. Uh the air handler unit for it, it, we've been told is gonna be here by the end of the summer.
Right, July.
And we should get that in there. Um and uh Workday is going phenomenal, I was told by Dr. Farmer. Let me get that sheet out here. Um Student Recruiting and Admissions, I, I believe that she said were up 24%. I believe the total applications for spring 2022, spring uh and fall 2022, it was, was like over 10,000? Applications or is?
11,000.
11,000, I'm sorry, I shorted. It's 11,000 applications. So um 24 of those, uh 24% increase for the fall 2021 semester, which is really good, so. And the major modules include, this is the Phase Two process. We're currently configuring the prototype unit and testing, collecting information from students, developing and institutional research. Integration is moving quickly and we are making decisions, AKA residency, using new functionalities. Real-life scenarios, start lifecycle testing, test systems from recruitment through graduation. So we had the whole full year cycle, so we're gonna gather this data and use it on the prove it going to next year is what that basically says.
Correct.
Which is good. So other than that, I don't have anything else, Chairman.
Can I add one thing, Trustee Mahalik? So um next month, if you recall, we moved forward the master plan update for 2023.
Oh, I forgot about that.
That's okay, that's okay. I just wanna remind, I just let the board know that Leggett will be at the, they'll be the primary business report at the June meeting. We are going to keep them um under control for time, but just to provide you with an update for comparison of 2018 through 2023 and just so you have that document. And then obviously, um Pat and I will work with Dr. Nemuel going forward to explain that, the process to him and what that looks like for our tenure capital plan and, you know, things such as that. So next month, you'll get an update from Leggett.
But if you have any questions at all, the show's being run twice. I get to go two times to it. Buildings and grounds first and then we can, you can absorb and ask the questions there and then can ask more questions at the board meeting, so.
Right.
And are you guys aware that Jeff is going to be retiring too from Leggett?
He's retiring in the end of June. He re, he did tell me that he would remain on the board, but he is retiring, yes, as principal, June 30th. Yeah, Jeff's been an amazing partner for JJC.
Yeah, he has been a great partner.
Yes.
All right, we're good?
That concludes my report. Judy, Judy correcting me a little bit.
I, no, I added on, I added. I was, remember, I was the other. I was the other.
You're, you're my Serena at the board meeting.
There you go.
That's for sure.
All right. Nine point five, Board Policy Committee Report. Do we add anything here?
Go over the uh, I'd go over it in new and old business, so unless there's anything important to add or any questions, I will pull that policy for you, Maureen, and take a look at that.
Thank you.
All right. Nine point six, Finance Committee Report.
We approved a tentative budget tonight. We kinda beat up finance over the last couple of meetings, unless there's questions, Sam. If there's questions, Jeff was here, I can't. So if there's any questions.
We have no questions? Okay. Thank you for your report. Nine point seven, President's Report.
Okay. Um thank you for everyone. Thank you, Christy and Kelly, tonight for your business reports and your updates. Greatly appreciated. Um several highlights, just reminding the board that I've been out and about, meeting with um our district. Uh Trustee Broderick, Kelly Roder, Tenelli and I attended the Romeo Ville, Romeo Ville Village Board Meeting where um we provided some updates and again, thank you, thanking them for their continued support. Um I also attended and presented at the Morris City Council Meeting and then I attended the Joliet City Council Meeting to provide an update to them and where they graciously provided me or presented me with a proclamation on behalf of the city. So very humbling. Um and I, and I appreciate the, the city's continued support for Joliet Junior College. Uh Trustee Lee, Kelly Roder, Tenelli and I also attended the State of the Village in Shanahan. And Trustee Broderick and I presented at the Lockport Township High School Board Meeting recently and it was, again, very well-received. Um some of the employee recognition events that I said were held, I wanna thank you to HR and all who were involved in that amazing week. It was so great to see the smiles on our employees. Well-deserved. Some of the highlights that I just wanna share in addition to the fun, we, we had a notice, notable, notable event. We hired our, uh noticed and respected our essential employees, those from campus police facility services who were here all the way through COVID, from the first day out and recognized them and shared our appreciation with them. We held our core values recognition for those exemplary employees that were noted and highlighted by their, by their fellow colleagues. We held a party after dark for our second and third shift employees, so quite a few of us were there. Um Pat outlasted me a little bit. I didn't last as long as I thought I could that night. It was after the last board meeting. But I can just tell you that um the evening shift greatly appreciated it. We had activities for them, food, um cornhole toss, things like that. So again, we really need to um pay special note and thank all of those employees who worked those late hours. And then we held our Spring Service Awards, which again was another nice recognition. It was the first time in person, I think after a couple of years, but recognizing the years of. of years, but recognizing the years of service for our employees. So again, just great appreciation for everyone. Doctors Farmer, Irvin, and Kelly Roder, Tenelli, and I presented at the AACC Conference this past, this two weekends ago. Kelly and I shared our presentation, Assess and Address: Marketing Through an Equitable Lens. I have to say I was the intro. It was the Kelly Show. And Doctors Farmer and Irvin shared a standing-room-only presentation on how diversity, equity, and inclusion changes the college landscape, where Dr. Farmer provided the invitation and the introduction, and Dr. Irvin stole the show as well. I will tell you, I was extremely proud of both presentations. JJC continues to shine at the national level. Standing-room-only, people asking questions and reaching out. So again, always proud to share what we're doing at our college. We also attended several sessions, and rather than every one of us giving our, you know, our little update tonight, some of the highlights I thought I'd share with you. And just so you know, it's important for us when we attend these conferences, we bring this information back to our teams, and then we share with them the highlights that we've gathered. If there's anything new or different that we haven't considered, we talk about that. But I don't want to just, you know, say too much, but pretty much we come back and we've got this, we've done that. So, so a great presentation. But we did attend the Conversation of Panel with Education Under-Secretary Cavall, and he gave kudos to two-year colleges, noting our critical importance in economic mobility, equitable opportunities, and providing growth and living standards for students. He also noted the importance and impact of the 2021 American Rescue Plan's Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds and the impact it has made on community colleges. We're extremely grateful for the financial support for our students over the past couple of years, with the much-needed revenue support to support lost due to enrollment, in addition to investing in personnel and equipment needs required due to the ongoing pandemic. There was also discussion pertaining to the streamlining of FAFSA, which I'm sure many students and parents are very happy to hear, which both political parties agree on, identifying ways to trim down the application, making it easier for students and parents to complete. And again, I mentioned earlier, he spoke to the increasing trend of seeing more 28- to 29-year-olds enrolling over the traditional age of 18 and 19. Other sessions we attended, the benefits of community college baccalaureate degrees, and I know I've spoken with Dr. Namuwa about this, and will continue to have those conversations at the Illinois state level. Highlights from some states included specific degrees aligned with each community college, rather than a global approval across the entire state. And so the firm that presented, and I know Kelly attended this with me, but as of today, 25 states offer community college baccalaureate degrees. So we've got some work to do in Illinois. So this information will be shared with him going forward. Then there was one that specifically addressed equality and equity in the classrooms and how representation in the classroom matters. There were many highlights, including cultural self-awareness and training, and spending time to learn from each other about cultural differences in the classroom, helping to uplift our students. And I reference back to our cultural competency training led by Dr. Irvin and her team across the campus, and that I believe we're 100% across the board. And again, that continues to stress the importance of inclusivity across the college campus. Last night, Dr. Farmer and I attended the 10th anniversary of the Dual Degree Program, the graduation celebration and courting ceremony at Governor State University, representing JJC and our successful students. I want to thank you to Dr. Cheryl Green for her continued leadership and support for our graduates. She's just amazing. I did, Dr. Farmer and I did attend the student event this afternoon. It was great to see so many students recognized. So it was a great, again, another great afternoon, recognizing our students. We have a lot of honors programs, nursing pinning and all that going on. So a lot of fun and successful events going on, and students make sure that you thank and appreciate your faculty members, remember that. And I want to thank you again to Kristi and her team.